Minutes, uh, for the April 25th, 2018, uh, and...
I'll second it. Any more discussion? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, abstract, so I make a motion to accept the abstract number 18 dated May 2nd, 2018, and abstract number 19 dated May 9th, 2018, as presented.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Uh, we have no amendments. We did have some modifications, so I'll make a motion to accept the budget modifications as listed.
Second.
Uh, any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously again. Thank you. Um, I know that we had, at the last meeting, we had, uh, our Veterans Coordinator, Bill Meyer, uh, address us about, uh, the Veterans Meetings and our outreach program. Uh, that will continue this year, uh, as well as our senior outreach program. And then we talked about, uh, the Honor Flight. And, uh, I met last night with one of the directors of the Honor Flight, Jim Keib, uh, here last night. Uh, great meeting, and I think, unfortunately, Jim is not coming.
Right.
Okay, so, uh, Bill, can you talk to us a little bit about Honor Flight? This is something that I think all of you will find of interest or know someone who could be interested in this.
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, as you recall, last meeting, I gave you a brief, uh, report, and I also mentioned Honor Flight. And I'm here this evening to provide some more information on this curragi legal program. Uh, Honor Flight is actually a national program, started in 2005. It was their first flight. And it started in 2005 after, uh, the World War II monument was built in DC. And, uh, it came to the attention of folks that there were a lot of World War II vets who were not able to attend. And this is 60 years after the end of World War II. And they're very concerned, a lot of the, uh, World War II era vets were not having an opportunity to get to DC to see the memorial. So, a group started, uh, the flights started, uh, modestly in the first couple of years, and has now grown to a proposal, uh, program that has 130, uh, spots in the country. And Syracuse, the, uh, Honor Flight Syracuse is one of those spots. Uh, each one of the flights out of Syracuse is on twice a year. Uh, it handles approximately 80 veterans per flight. Uh, the flight costs, uh, around $30,000. So obviously, it's a major undertaking. They've, uh, gathered a number of sponsors, uh, not only the big corporate sponsors, but a number of, uh, smaller contributions, uh, literally from, uh, everybody around the community. Uh, that being said, they still want to address one very baggy part. The one baggy part is, well, every time there's a flight, like there was just a few days ago, there's a great deal of attention to Honor Flight. However, what happens after a couple of days, you know, it kind of dims. And people say, "Well, that's nice, but how do I participate? How can I join the next flight?" So, that's what we're doing now. We're having literally outreach programs on Honor Flight to make sure that everybody who's eligible, uh, can attend. Now, eligibility. They're obviously trying to focus primarily right now on the World War II era vets and the Korean vets, for obvious reasons. However, uh, there are going to be circumstances where it could be vets from Vietnam, or Afghanistan, or whatever, who may be in very severe medical condition. They're trying to make sure those folks get to the line as well. So, every, uh, veteran is invited to attend. You do not have to be wartime service. Anytime you're in uniform, you know, they would like to have you go. Uh, again, locally, uh, Honor Flight Syracuse started in 2012. Uh, again, they're doing two flights a year. Uh, it has a very large, uh, base of volunteers, but again, the emphasis right now for this evening and all through the county is to do the outreach part. Uh, I've given you, uh, some of the information on the program, uh, starting out with the application and a volunteer sheet. I highly encourage you to be one of the volunteers. I, I gotta tell you, if you've been on Honor Flight, this will be in the top 10 of things you've ever done in your life. Um, I took my, who's now 97-year-old mother, she's a World War II vet, uh, on the flight a few years ago, and she said to me, "Bill, you know, you are really getting on me hard to go on this." And I was really a little upset with her, because you're really getting on me. And when I dropped her off at her place that night, she said, "You're really doing it, but I'm really glad you did." Uh, every single veteran goes on this, has the same story. They'll say, "Well, I'm not really the important one. There are a lot of people who did a lot more than I did." But anybody on any team like this knows, you mean, everybody on the team could be able to get the mission done. So, I'm, uh, out here doing the part for the veterans in Cicero, in the Sisro area. Uh, I would hope that you would, you know, join the effort and be a, a guardian. You don't get to wear the red shirts like the veterans get. You get to wear the, kind of, yellow, green ones, okay? But you get to go to all the monuments, and you actually get to go to Arlington. And Arlington, if you've been to the, uh, the Unknown and see the changing of guard, again, it's gonna be one of those top 10 items that you ever remember. So I strongly urge you to, uh, to attend. Now, forms are nice, but nice colors are, are good, too. Uh, the supervisor and the clerk have both, uh, agreed to post some information. And just so you know, the clerk has been on the, on the flight and has been a guardian. So, if folks come to town, I'll look for information. She's a, a real living example of somebody who's been there. And so, here's the poster. We have a poster up. Uh, it's a little, you know, tear-off thing on the bottom, so you can pull off the numbers so you can get more information. Today's World, of course, they have a website. So, uh, not only do we do the old-fashioned phone number and the, and the posters, but we do the, uh, the website type information. So, with that being said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Bill, just a quick question. How, um, how do you reach out to a lot of the veterans who are unaware of this?
Well, you hit exactly on the, on the head we're trying to get at, Councilor. This is, this is the thing we're trying to do. And what we found out is, there was a disconnect from the long seat of flight, and then, and then said, "Well, jeez, how do I do it?" And that's what we've done, said, "Jeez, there's a problem." So that's why I'm here. And hopefully, you will all help with this. So, if, if you wanna go, I, I greatly encourage you to do it, but you may have a friend, neighbor, relative, you know, who would vice versa. Uh, I ask you to just take this and pass along. The clerk will have extra copies, and I'm more than happy to run the copy a few more times for you, so you can have copies and, you know, pass along.
Is there a list of the veterans out of the suite? There is somewhere that you, they receive notification of it, or, uh, the opportunity is given to them? How do you notify the veterans?
Um, I'm not very subtle about this opportunity. Uh, when I'm out, uh, working with a veteran and their family on other issues, whether it's, uh, veterans' benefits, or being able to go to the VA for services, or housing issues, uh, this is one of the tools, my toolbox, uh, to tell them about this. And I know, uh, my experience dealing with all of you, I, I can, I'm fully comfortable saying that I'm counting on you, and I have no reservation that you're gonna be out. Every time you see somebody you think may be an advocate, or, or might have participated, that you'll help us. But we have to have community leaders like you all doing it, okay? Because I'm just one, okay? And the other folks are just one. But, uh, you guys know a whole lot of people around this community. And so, that's why I'm here, you know, in front of you, to upstart the word.
Okay, thank you.
We, um, we are going to, I'm gonna ask David Kirk, our website and Facebook coordinator, to, uh, post, uh, information on our website and also on our Facebook page. And we are, um, honored tonight to have a representative of the local newspaper, Ashley Casey, who I'm sure will take some information with her as well. And we're gonna send you some pictures and a, and a news, a little, come up in the news clip for you, Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Just one last comment on this. What impressed me last night in our meeting was that it's not just the World War II veterans. And, and the World War II veterans, my dad was a World War II vet. Um, I'm sure the young family members who served in the Second World War. But they're, they're passing away, unfortunately, at a very high rate. Uh, but they are looking now at, at Korean War veterans, and there's a lot of people from my era, uh, the Vietnam veterans, uh, who, if they have, uh, suffered medically, or they were injured, uh, aged orange, or whatever, uh, they will be considered for this flight as well. So everybody knows somebody that, uh, that could possibly benefit from this. Anyway, thank you for that. Um, we'll now have a public hearing to consider the adoption of a local law, which would be Local Law Number Four of 2018. The installation of a no parking sign at the end of Grandview Drive. And that's critical for garbage trucks and snowplow turnaround. Folks, I guess, are parking there, and, uh, it's making a hardship for our snowplows and most of the garbage trucks. I have proof of publication and posting. Uh, I'll open the public hearing now, and anyone who would like to speak either for or against, uh, putting a no parking sign at the end of Grandview Drive, I would ask you to come up and give us a word now. There being none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, I think we'd be an unlisted action for the purpose of secret compliance. And note, the action requires, uh, action by no outside permitting agency outside the town. The proposed installation of no parking sign at the end of Grandview Drive, uh, it will have, uh, will not have a negative impact on the environment, and therefore does not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement.
Second.
Uh, any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? I'll now move for the adoption of a resolution to consider, uh, the installation, not to consider, we're gonna install it. The installation of a no parking sign at the end of Grandview Drive, critical for garbage trucks and snowplow turnaround, to be known as Local Law Number Four of 2018.
Second.
Uh, any board comments or discussion? There being none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
The Police Building Bid Award. I move for the adoption of a resolution to award the bid for custodial services for the new police department building to immaculate commercial cleaning at a pay rate of $600 a month, effective May 16, 2018.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve $2,688 to Centennial Veterinary Service for Dog Control Service, Code A35104.
Second. Any board comments or discussion?
Um, Mark, we had pulled this off. Did you clarify what this was?
Yes, uh, this was an oversight on the bill. Mrs. Cosman pulled the, the bill for us, and it was an oversight, and we voted on it. There was a charge, an additional charge. Uh, it was, I'm not gonna say it was hidden, but it was, it was not included in the bottom line. It was above the bottom line, and it's there for you to see. So, uh, basically, we overlooked that.
Are we being reimbursed for this also via the restitution being paid through probation?
My understanding, uh, from the court clerk is all this went in front of Doug, um, Judge Demarche, and Doug Demarche, um, assessed the convicted defendant, or the perpetrator, uh, the entire amount. So, what happens with this is that the county, Anadaga County collects the money, and then after they've collected the money, probably after we're all gone, uh, they will reimburse the town of Cicero.
Well, he has to pay it through the course of his restitution.
Yeah.
Misdemeanors free, so it's gonna, it'll be paid every few years.
Yeah.
So, we're not getting it this year.
Right. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Uh, any other board discussion? Uh, did we, uh, did we take a vote on that already?
No.
Okay. Uh, then, um, anyway, Vern made the resolution. Did we get a second?
You seconded it.
I seconded it. Any other, any other board discussion? I'm sorry. Uh, there being none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Highway Garage Project. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the payment of $31,685.92 to MRB Group for professional services during the March 18th through April 14, 2018, on the Highway Garage Project. We also have, uh...
Yeah, I'll second it. Yeah. Uh, any board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve $526.50 to MRB Group for the bidding process for the sewer extension for the Highway Garage Project.
Second.
All those, uh, any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Site material purchased for the highway. Whereas the town of Cicero Board, hereinafter referred to as the Town Board, intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero, as site package was prepared in the bid in advance of the building package. In addition, quotes requests were sent out to the vendors and suppliers for materials that would be installed by the site contractor previously awarded the project. Whereas the town requested quotes for the following materials: geotextile fabric, sanitary and stormwater sewer piping, precast concrete structures, stone and asphalt. Total cost of the bid materials is $433,195.25. Water supply for the materials, excuse me, water supply for the facility will be, as it is not a state bid item, and the quote exceeded the procurement threshold. The alternate cost of the materials, which is primarily to increase hard surface area on the site, is $241,997.90. Determination on the alternate selection will be decided at a later date. I would mention that the threshold is $20,000. That's why it doesn't have to go up for state bid. Whereas a summary of the quotes are attached, noting a low quote in each respective category and the respective contractor. The materials will be delivered to the site or hauled by the site contractor, stone and asphalt, for use in completing the site work required for the facility. Note that stone and asphalt quantities are estimates and may change slightly. Whereas each supplier and vendor will be required to enter into an agreement with the town, no payment will be made until materials are delivered to the site. Now, therefore, be advised that the Town Board accepts the quotes for the base bid materials totaling $433,195.25, and enter into agreement with the respective vendors or suppliers. The alternates at a cost of $241,997.90 will be considered at a later date and may be approved pending evaluation of the total cost of the whole project. The Town Board further resolved supervisor be authorized to execute all contracts for materials, including costs to the alternatives, if deemed affordable.
Second.
Uh, any board comments or discussion?
Um, I just have one comment. Um, trying to understand the, uh, alternate selection and, um, to be determined affordable. Um, if, obviously, the board would be notified prior to, um, making any of these payments that would come out of the affordable account, whatever that might be.
Right, well, we're not gonna, yes, absolutely. We, uh, nothing will be, nothing will be without authorization of the board. But what they did, what they did with this project, and I, and I stopped it, was, we bid, and Don, you were part of those discussions, right? We, we had bid materials, uh, and, uh, thought that it would be more cost-effective to purchase materials on the state bid and then deliver these materials to the contractors who have won the bids for the paving and for the, the stormwater installation and all that. It sounded great at first when we, when we first thought about it. And then we thought about it a little bit more, right? And we said, "Well, wait a minute. If we're responsible for the materials, and there's a hiccup in getting the materials to the site, then a contractor can say, 'Well, wait a minute, you know, I've, I've got 14 people here. You're paying them, right? Whether the material's here or not.'" So we didn't think that, and we rethought that. We didn't think that was a good idea. So, on the, what you'll find is, but, we bid it out, and that's the way we did it on this first part of the project, all of us collectively. Uh, what you're gonna find is, when we bid the, uh, the Highway Garage itself, there will be one contractor, and that contractor will be responsible for soup to nuts, right? So if there's a, if there's a hiccup or some sort of disconnect, uh, the town will not be liable, the payable.
Mark, just, just to clear, you know, we, we did find that we needed, because of the Wicks Law, we actually have four contractors, uh, but the, uh, and the architect is actually the one we hired, in his fee, uh, is where the coordination expense will come. It's already, we've already paid, I mean, we've had that bid from MRB.
Right.
Uh, but we tried to get it, because I was used to working for the state and having one major contract. We found that, no, we need to do the Wicks Law, which means you've gotta have those individual, uh, so we ran electrical, plumbing, um, fire protection, heating valley. The fire protection and plumbing are one contractor. So it's, it's heating valley, plumbing, and electric. So we'll actually end it with four, four major contracts, is what they call it.
But they will be under the direction of a major, one main contractor's building the building?
No, they'll be under the, they'll be under MRB's control.
Okay.
We, we, that's what you and I were really concerned about. We needed control.
Right.
And, and we have the guarantee that MRB is the controlling...
Well, MRB would oversee the, the contractor, the general contractor.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you, Don.
Don, thank you. Uh, any other, um, comments or board questions? Yeah? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any objections, uh, or abstentions? We pass unanimously. Well, now, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, MS4 State Blute and Discharge Eliminating System, which is a speedy system, permit annual report. And Steve Snell, would you like to talk to us about the MS4?
Sure. Um, basically, this, this is an able permit that the town is required to comply with first DEC regulation. And the permit outlines six minimum measures that need to be complied with. And each year, we have to, um, basically identify and describe all of the measures that the town is implementing to comply to those measures. Include that in an annual report, and provide that report for, uh, public comment. So basically, we've, we've drafted that report. It's now being able to public review and comment, and we'll address it in comments, and then submit it formally to DEC.
Is that something that we'll put on the website for people to view and see?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. We don't need any sort of resolution. It's just a, uh, informational thing, a little... John?
Move the adoption of a resolution to allow the homeowner of 8344 Parker House Path to use landco companies instead of the town's contractor to make a connection to the public sanitary sewer system for a new home to be built, at 8344 Parker House Path, subject to meeting the town's insurance requirements.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve the following sanitary sewer repair work payable to DE Teroli Incorporated. 103, Marywood Drive, at the amount of $8,475.09. And 5834 East Circle Drive, in front of Bank of America, at the amount of $8,121.19.
Second.
Uh, any board comments or discussion? Steve, anything you wanna, I know Teroli contacted you earlier in the discussion.
Yes, um, both of these were emergency repairs. Marywood Drive most of the lateral had to be replaced due to two issues that were out there, made out of, or, the cement had repaired. East Circle Drive, actually, the, the line was damaged under East Circle Drive.
Yeah.
We ended up having to directional drill a new lateral all the way to the town's contract to, to the town's sewer, um, to allow them to connect to that line as well. That happened, actually, uh, over the winter months. We got them through until, just recently, until it's completely...
Thank you. Uh, any, um, did we have a second on that? Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, well, I'll, I'll bring it up in discussion.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to appoint the following, uh, part-time help: Austin Freeman, Double Hastings, Bradley Pry, uh, as seasoned highway laborers at a rate of $12 per hour, effective 6/18. Contingent passing the pre-employment fiscal.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following purchases: $40,800 to Apex Striping Incorporated for road striping service, uh, for the town budget, code number Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. A couple of things on discussion items. Uh, with the board's permission, uh, our, one of our county legislators, Tim Burris, uh, and I had a conversation today. He has a concern, and some of the residents who live over near Gillette Road Elementary School, uh, have a concern about traffic, um, uh, next to the Dunkin' Donuts and, and, you know, Gillette Road dumps onto South Bay Road. South Bay Road is a county road, it's not a town road. And, uh, Tim would like to pursue a stoplight there with Anadaga County DOT. However, Anadaga County DOT will not even look at it unless the board passes a resolution asking him to do that. So I'd like to inter, uh, like, inject a, uh, a resolution that is not on the agenda if, uh, the board will go.
Before you do, um, did we do a traffic study on that? Is there...
Anadaga County DOT, it's a county road.
So we're not asking the county to put the light, we're asking the county to look into, to put a light.
Look into, right.
And we're asking the county to do the traffic study.
That's right.
Okay. I'm, I have no objection.
Uh, I make a resolution asking the County of Anadaga to look into, uh, installing a traffic control device, uh, on the corner of Gillette Road and South Bay Road.
Second taken.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Any, uh, excuse, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
I think you should add to that, that, uh, that specifically that the board is expressing support for a light there, and authorizing the supervisor to send a letter to the county to that effect.
Uh, you wanna make the resolution?
Well, I can't.
Okay, you can. All right, so we will, uh...
One other thing, um, because the school buses are real close to that intersection as well, um, wouldn't that also be a part of that? Shouldn't it be a part of that? Because the, the exits for the school buses are, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, real close to that intersection.
It's also a very hard intersection to exit with snowplows.
Yeah. I, I would think that the county, the Department of Transportation's traffic study would encompass looking at that, right? So, uh, let me amend that resolution to read that, uh, we will allow the supervisor to write a letter in support, and that this board supports a study by Anadaga County DOT to look at installing a traffic control device.
But he suggested that we say that we support the light. Are we saying we support the light, or we support the study?
You can say, well, what the county really wants to do is an expression of support from the, from the local board. That's what they ask for.
Then we'll, we'll amend it again. Thank you.
You're saying that the, a light, a traffic control device there would be helpful for your snowplows, so...
Very helpful.
Okay, right, in that case, I support it. Not just the study, the actual light itself.
Right, the actual light. So, uh, we'll amend that again, um, and we'll ask Anadaga County, um, to, uh, look into installing a tropical control device at the corner of Gillette Road and South Bay Road, and that the Cicero Town Board supports a light and a study, a traffic study the Cisro Towne Board supports a light and a study, a traffic study to affect that.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any objections or abstentions? I'm dying with these, this elegy, sorry. A couple things before we go to public input. Some of you may remember, who have been around for a while, that we have, the town has an issue with Darlene's Brook. Darlene's Brook has culverts that run underneath Circle Drive. Part of that is owned by the state, part of that East Circle Drive is owned by the Towne Cisro. We've been negotiating, Steve Snell has been with me, negotiating with DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, DOT, the Department of Transportation, and also the engineer who had the project and currently has that project for the town and has for 10 years. So we are very close to having permits issued and having that work actually happen this year in September. And they were talking about a September start date because I think there's some sort of bird that could possibly be affected, so, or species, so they'll put that off. But we're looking at having those, those culverts relined and having it done beginning in September. It's been a long, 10-year process, but we'll bring it to a close, this board will bring it to a close. And then finally, for me, this is very uncomfortable. We had a lot of folks in here last, at the last board meeting. I've received letters and emails about the proposed project on Lake Shore Road. And I have held my opinion close to the breast because I think there's an ethics issue simply by the fact that I, being the supervisor of the town, there's an ethics issue if I state an opinion and am seen as unduly influencing an independent board. So I have held my opinions and I've been asked by many people and I have not shared them with anyone, except my wife, Mary Ellen, who's not here at the time. But as a, as a public, as a resident of the Towne Cisro, there's two things, and I promised you this when you elected me. Number one, I think that the Towne Cisro needs a tax base and I've been a pro business supervisor, but I also promised that I would do all that I could to see that we have guaranteed or considered the quality of life in our community. I have an issue with, with that, with that project. I have a couple of issues, but I'll only share one. As a resident, not as the supervisor of the Towne Cisro, I think there's a density issue with that project. And I am not going to ask, the only thing I would say is, is I, I would count on and hope that the people making the decision make the right decision when it comes to that project. That's all that I will say on that, but I think you can read into it.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Supervisor. I also came to the conclusion recently that it is not inappropriate to comment on that. I actually posted a statement on my Town Council Facebook page last night. I agree and share the supervisor's concerns that the proposed density of this project creates significant risk of a very serious adverse effect on the quality of life of the residents surrounding it, not just in the immediate area, but up and down Lake Shore Road. And I am expressing this opinion as myself and as a town council, however. It's not my intent that this opinion influence the planning board to take or refrain from taking any action. This is me simply stating my opinion. The, the planning board does have numerous options at its disposal and I'm confident that the members of the planning board will consider those options and elect.
Anyone else? At this point, I will leave it up. I'm sorry?
Can I?
You may.
Interject for a second, please. I've been approached by Lake Shore Road people in regards to a different issue. And it is when you're coming from 31, turning right onto Lake Shore Spur, turn onto Lake Shore Road, that the, around the dumpster area needs to be moved back. So, anyway. And that, and I also support Tracy in regards to the sound system. I am helping her as well. I have a couple of contacts. I got to speak to her and have reiterated that the amount of usage and what it does for us in the town hall and for all the people in this town to get the minutes. And the clerk's office works very hard on it, that we definitely need a sound system and I'll do everything I can to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, would anyone like to approach the board?
Mark?
Yes.
No, I just want to, the, we've approved a number of things lately as it relates to the building and I think we need to, to let you all know what's going on with the, for example, sewer project. We approved it. We had a contractor sign contracts. We had a pre-construction meeting, we had a, yeah, pre-construction meeting last week. We found out that the piping is a problem for delivery and so it's not going to be the contractor's fault, number one. We don't need the sewer installation tomorrow anyway. So if someone asks you, you know, I thought we approved the sewer going down 31, why aren't they doing it? Well, it's because it's really only going to be about a four-week job and the piping is at least six to eight weeks out. It's going to be a welded piping system, much like what they do with the gas lines. So it'll go in quick. They're obviously doing some directional drilling across some properties and under some roads, but that's, that's on its way. The, the committee that's working on this building are trying their hardest to get it out for bid by June 1. What we told Mark is we will get it out as soon as possible, but we would rather wait a week longer to get it done right than to have a bunch of addendums go out. When addendums go out with a contract, contractors start to get antsy, they say, what, what are these guys, what did they forget? And so, because it's a very complicated building, a lot of systems. We met with Chris and his staff on Monday, we've got that together. We were all ready to have a meeting this week, but because the mechanical engineer is out of town, we are going to do it next week and schedule for either Wednesday or Thursday next week. We just got an email today. So that's moving ahead. So the site work guy, there's a little bit of paperwork yet to sign, insurance and stuff, but he'll be starting too. But, so what we all need to pray for is no rain because it's not very easy to move dirt around when you're doing it and it's called muddy. We need dirt, not muddy. So that's kind of, we're trying to keep him informed as we're going along. It's going to be a great facility. Chris is going to have to live in his old building this year, he knows that. I think he knew it from day one.
Yeah.
We're trying to keep him positive because he really likes the year 2.0 as opposed to the year 1.9. We like the year 1.9. So we're pushing for 1.9. He would really like the heavy 1.9, but being a very real kind of a guy, he thinks it might be 2.0, but we'll, we'll keep that on target.
There you go. All right, and I just, I have to shout out Don Snyder again. Don spends nearly as many hours here as I do. I think I see you here more than anyone other than the regular staff and I want to thank you for all the hours.
You see me, you see him.
I got Don, and I'll tell you, Don's loss as well. Both these guys, sorry, Don. I've just done a bang-up job with this. We have a lot of meetings, we have a lot of talking about the building, but yes, we, the reality is, is we're going to spend another winter in that building behind us. That, that isn't going to change for all the reasons that you know and some that you don't. But we're going to make sure that we do this right, we got one shot. So if it delays us a week or two, then that's what we're going to do in getting it out, but it will be done properly and done right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Chief.
Chief?
I want to give an update on the PD.
Please do.
Today, we crossed the threshold, we moved our donated furniture, about $70,000 worth of free furniture to the town. Moved that in today, got the building set up. Our goal is right now, is we still have vendors over there working on the access security systems, CIT system, and the phone systems. We've been told that Monday afternoon, the phones will be cut over from the current facility to the new facility, requiring our admin clerks to move into it and it'll be open for business. This will be closed. And, but our patrol operations will still be operating out of here as we've still got some minor construction to do for our booking area, our locker rooms and areas like that for patrol. So we're looking at, into next week, by, actually by Friday, to have our entire operation operating out of the new facility. Can I encourage anybody who wants a home or a tour, please come over. I think you'll be impressed. You know, we have a retired trooper over here who may have worked out of that facility and went out and I think he would be impressed if he saw it today.
I'm anxious.
Yeah, we, I, to kind of big band, I went through the building today, early afternoon. It's, it's beautiful. That, that is such a beautiful facility and I can't tell you how proud I am. And the folks here in the Towne Cisro should be proud. And we, we said we were going to move this town forward and Don moved it forward. We're, we're not dodging any issues. We've come together, we needed a highway garage and we built it. We need a home for our police department, we didn't dodge it. And thankfully, the state of New York paid for that building, thank you. But that was a great negotiation, it was a lot of fun doing it. But when you look at that building, it's something we can all be proud of. The, the sign out front, the signage, the offices, the, it, it's, it's just, I think, a real shot in the arm for this community and we need it. You're all going to be impressed in June 8th is our dedication to the building.
And it was tentatively scheduled for June 30th as an open house for the community.
For the community. And I would.
But anyone here that wants a tour, but just stop in after next Monday and morning. Yeah, I'm a great tour guide for that new facility.
Yeah, it's great.
Also, I want to give really a thanks to Chris Westnick and his people because they really work hard to help us with some water issues we had. The parks are wrecked for stepping in and replacing a sun pump for us and mowing our yard for us at this point.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really been a total time-wide project. Appreciate everybody's help.
Awesome, awesome building. Thank you, Chief.